All right, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one era, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, tonight we are privileged to have the National Anthem being performed by Sophia and Sarafina Pale. Sarafina is an eighth grader at Maple Point Middle School. She's a member of Maple Point Select Choir and Concert Choir. Sarafina recently played Sherry in Maple Point's production of Rock of Ages Youth Edition this March. In March, Sarafina also earned a first Chair placement in the Bucks County MEA County Choir. She loves being onstage and performing with her friends. Sophia is a junior at Neshamani High School. She's a member of the Roadies Alice Lutz Choir, and she has had roles in Neshamani's Fall and Spring Plays as well as Neshamani and Summer Stock Musicals. Recently, Sophia was awarded a scholarship from the Longhorn Council for the Arts to further her music education. Sophia loves any opportunity she gets to be onstage. Sarafina and Sophia.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight For the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was fantastic. Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Copley, would you please call your role?
Absolutely. Mr. Kezak?
Here.
Ms. Hannah?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Ms. Strauss?
Here.
Also in attendance tonight for the last time Township Manager Ms. Tuli Kools, Assistant Township Manager Ms. Devalla, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, Township Engineer Mr. Kessler, Chief of Police Joseph Bottarella, Director of Building and Zoning Jim Ennis, Director of Parks and Recreation Paul Capara, Director of Finance Laura Hucklebridge, Director of Public Works Eric Gardemeier.
Thank you, Ms. Copley. The next Board of Supervisors meeting is Monday, June 9th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We have several very important special items tonight. The first is the swearing-in of our new police officer, Officer Gianna Zanino. Chief?
Okay. Can I start from the beginning? All right. So I'm here to introduce and have sworn in our newest officer, Gianna Zanino. Gianna Zanino grew up in Levittown. She attended Karen University in Langhor Manor, graduated with honors with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice in 2024, finishing her complete degree in only two years. Gianna worked privately, for private security rather, for two years at Sesame Police while in college and after graduating. She just started the Temple University Police Academy in Ambler last week and will graduate in six months. In her free time, she enjoys spending time with her family and friends, spending time outdoors, and reading. So with that, now Gianna, I'll ask you to step up on the dais and be ceremonially sworn in by our chair.
Absolutely. I, Gianna Zanino, solemnly swear to support, obey and defend, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the ordinances of Middletown Township, with duty, honor, and fidelity, as a Middletown Township Police Officer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kezak.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next on our agenda, we have a National Public Works Week proclamation, and it reads as follows. Whereas public works infrastructure is above, below, and all around us, we are able to have clean water, safe streets, sufficient traffic, and livable communities because of public works. And whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Middletown Township. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our roads, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the residents of Middletown Township to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs. Now therefore do we, the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week as designated by the American Public Works Association. All right, so next on the agenda, we have a recognition of our Township Manager Stephanie Teoli Kools. And we are going to start this celebration off with a brief slideshow.
So take the photographs and still frames in your mind Hanging on a shelf in Good Health and Good Time Tattoos and memories and dead skin on trial For what it's worth, it was worth all the while It's something unpredictable, but in the end it's right I hope you had the time of your life
For those that don't know, although I think probably everybody does, our Township Manager Stephanie Teoli Kools is retiring after a long and incredible career serving Middletown Township. It's a tremendous loss for us, for the residents, for the staff, but we certainly wish her nothing but the best as she moves on to the next chapter. We have a number of people here who want to share their thoughts about Stephanie. Before we do that, the board just has a couple of tokens that we wanted to share with you. I was thinking about this today. You're the only Township Manager that any of us have ever worked with. So this is going to be strange and difficult to see you leave, but we're happy for you. We're excited for you, and we just are so thankful and appreciate it for everything that you've done for this Township and for all of us. So thank you. So this is like the coolest thing in the world. Mr. Vala, the Public Works Department, anybody who had a hand in putting this thing together, I just want to thank. It's, I'm super excited about it. So we are pleased to present you with Teoli Kools Way. And we also have a plaque which Ms. Hannah is going to present to you. And it's not a retirement celebration without flowers. Yeah, you guys will just stay standing. All right, we have some folks that want to recognize you as well. First, I'd like to invite up, I know we have a representative, Ashley Conaway, from State Senator Frank Ferry's office. And I believe Ashley's here on behalf of Representatives Hogan, Prokopiac, Davis, and Sanchez. State Representative Sanchez, for those that don't know, is Stephanie, State Representative.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. Senator Ferry is sorry that he couldn't make it. The Senate is in session, so he had to be in Harrisburg. But on behalf of the Senate of Pennsylvania and the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I'm pleased to present you with two citations just to say congratulations and thank you for all your service to the Township and its residents, and best wishes.
And I believe we also have a representative from Congressman Fitzpatrick's office as well.
Good evening and thank you for having me. Again, the Congressman apologizes for not being able to be here. Congress is in session, but he did want me to extend his heartfelt congratulations on 13 hard years of service here. Well-deserved retirement as well. I had heard from a little bird that you would always want one of these, so...
Very impressed by those things. Wait till my dad hears what that is.
Well, then, on behalf of the Congressman, it's my pleasure to present you with this flag of the United States of America that was flown over the United States Capitol Building in recognition of your 13 years of service as the Township Manager of Middletown Township. Your distinguished career in governing exemplifies your commitment and dedication to serving others. Your legacy will be a guiding light to our current and future leaders in government. Congratulations.
At this time, I'm going to open it up. Anybody that's here that would like to come up to the podium and say a few words about Stephanie Teoli Kools, you are more than welcome.
I guess I got nominated to go first. Hello, I'm Rick Mellor. I am now the Executive Director of the Delaware Valley Trust. First, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing Stephanie to serve on the Delaware Valley Workers Comp Trust Board for 17 years. Most recently, she has served as the Chair of that Board, obviously of Workers Comp through us, and indirectly through her decision-making, her leadership, her steady hand, she has indirectly helped save the taxpayers here in Middletown by having those rates and those premiums at such a rate through those decision-making that she has had during those 17 years. So we greatly appreciate everything that she has given to the trust. The one thing that I'll say about Stephanie is she is all about history. She's about the history of the trust. She never forgot where the trust came from and where it's been. So we, on behalf of everybody that served before me and all the executive committee members, I would just like to say thank you, Stephanie, for all your service to the Delaware Valley Trust. Secondly, personally, I just would like to thank Stephanie. When I was a young 22-year-old starting in this industry, there wasn't a lot of people that looked like me in local government, and Stephanie was one of those people that took me under her wing, like many people here, that she mentored through the years, has been just such a guiding light for us, a steady person that you could always call, that you could commiserate with when I was in local government. So it was something that I always enjoyed those conversations with her. Greatly appreciate everything that she's done for me personally. I'm very excited about the future and the next chapter of your life, and hopefully we'll be able to collaborate down the road. So congratulations, Stephanie.
Thank you, Rick.
Hello, I'm Sandra Zadel, a close friend of Stephanie's and her mentee. First, I'm going to make comments for a manager that couldn't make it tonight, just for the crowd. There's a ton of managers here. Everyone that's a manager, raise your hand. Woo! We all came to celebrate Stephanie because she means the world to us. So I have to wear Rick's reading glasses on camera because I forgot mine. Steph, this is from Carolyn Steph. Okay. Stephanie has been a constant in my life since I became a Township Manager, first as a fellow Bucks County Manager, and then as a member of Women in Government, affectionately known as WIGS. She has and continues to exemplify what it means to be a public servant, one who is committed to each community she has worked in during her career. She has mentored new managers, supported women managers, and been a valuable resource to anyone who sought her advice... Sorry, I didn't write this. Or counsel. As a friend, she is always gracious, encouraging, and empathetic. Stephanie was one of the first to encourage me to grow professionally and seek a new position in Montgomery Township. She knew my reservations and my story, but recognized it was time to take a chance, and she was right. I'm a better manager because of our quiet conversations and shared anecdotes. While she will be missed in the day-to-day trenches of local government, I'm excited to watch her shine into the next chapter of her professional life. Carolyn has a board meeting, so she couldn't make it. Now from me. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I am probably Stephanie's proudest mentee, although I know a lot of us are really proud that she was our mentor. I met Steph about 15 years ago. Personally, I can't overstate the impact she has had on me. I don't think I'm going to make it through this without crying, so just a warning. In every moment, Steph has led me by example, showing me what it means to care about the community and the people you serve, most importantly, our employees. She's spent hours helping me prepare for job interviews, coaching me through all my firsts as a Township Manager, my first complex land development, first police negotiations in a new town, and the first time I had to sit at the dais as a Township Manager, which is terrifying in case anyone doesn't know. Knowing I had Steph in my corner cheering me on at every turn gave me the confidence to be the manager I am today. Not looking that way anymore. Our mentor-mentee relationship has changed over the years. As I grew and learned, we became sounding boards for each other, and I'm so glad that I could give back to Steph what she gave to me. The only thing she ever asked for in return is that you pay it forward, which I am proud to have done. Through challenges and triumphs, Steph's leadership has always been steady, thoughtful, and full of grace. I've had the privilege of learning from her not just how to manage a township, but how to lead with integrity, listen with empathy, and serve with commitment. Something that's always been extremely important to Stephanie is making sure she treats every single person equally, both our residents and our staff. Her example will always be a compass for me in my role as Township Manager. One last thought. I know one of Stephanie's proudest achievements is the work she did serving on various committees with APMM. That's our Association for Professional Managers, most notably as the Chair of the Professional Development Committee. Stephanie has given endless hours of volunteer time, ensuring that the next generation of leaders is well-trained and ready to take on roles in local government. It wasn't just me she helped, but it was all of us. Thank you for everything, Steph. I did it. No tears were actually shed.
All right, I'm going to follow. I'm a part of the close group with Stephanie, and I'm the Delaware County Township Manager, so I'll script myself because I think they get nervous with Delco at times. But I just first wanted to say thank you so much, everyone, for giving us the chance to say a few words about one of my favorite people, Stephanie Teoli Kools. I'm here tonight as a fellow Township Manager, so I'll admit it feels a little strange being on this side of the dais, so I promised to be brief and use this power for good this evening. Stephanie, Sandra, and I recently had a conversation on Friday about people, about how essential it is to love the people you work with, respect the elected officials you serve, and care deeply about the community members who rely on your leadership every single day. If you've worked with Stephanie, you know she lived that truth every day with her people here in Middletown. That's why she and her team thrived, because her leadership created an environment of trust, collaboration, and purpose. With that kind of leadership, it's no surprise that her influence extended beyond Middletown, helping to shape and inspire municipal leaders across Pennsylvania. Being a municipal manager is not an easy job. It demands time, energy, res- not an easy job. It demands time, energy, resilience, and so much of yourself, often at the expense of your own personal time and family. And that's why finding your people in this profession matters so much. I was lucky enough to meet Stephanie over 20 years ago and had the opportunity to have her as a mentor, a friend, and a colleague. She is my people. I think within five minutes of our meeting, we were laughing, talking about how we grew up, our families, and our shared love for local government. She is driven, she is smart, she is funny, and she is one of the most generous, authentic, and genuinely kind people I have ever known. She's beautiful inside and out. We've laughed until we've cried, we've leaned on each other, and we've given each other advice through the tough moments. Her generosity has no limits, and like so many others here tonight, we have ridden her coattails to our own excellence, which she helped shape. Stephanie, thank you for your friendship, your example, your service, and for being one of my people. Your legacy in Middletown is not just written in policies or projects. It lives in the people you've mentored, the lives you've touched, and the community you've helped flourish. Congratulations on an extraordinary career, and selfishly, I look forward to getting more of your time now that you aren't a Township Manager. Lord knows, Sandra and I need the help, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bakir Altimoss, and I am the Parks and Rec Specialist at Evergreen Township. I am proud to say I got my start here at Middletown Township as a Sport League Coordinator in Parks and Rec under Stephanie. Middletown was my first step into local government and public service. I was nervous, unsure of how everything worked, wanting to prove myself. Stephanie is in a million places at once. She has a myriad of responsibilities. However, she always took the time to check in on me, make sure I was comfortable and progressing. She was kind and gentle, but I could always tell that she demanded excellence out of all of her departments, and because of that, she created a culture of strong, accountable leadership. Stephanie, thank you so much for creating an environment where young professionals like myself could grow and be inspired. You made a lasting impact, and I'm proud to have been a part of it. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Angela. I'm a fellow manager, a fellow WIG, and I just want to say I've had the pleasure of knowing Steph for several years, and she's been a great supporter of my growth in local government as I was coming up as a manager. She'll be missed as a fellow manager, but I'm excited to see how she excels at the next chapter in her career, as I have no doubt she will do great. Steph, thanks for all you have done as a manager and as a friend. It has been a pleasure serving alongside you on the Consortium of Managers, as well as an exec board member of one of the trusts. Thank you. Best of luck.
Getting this over early. I have no prepared speech, but one of the things the Chair has said was the impact that you've made on Middletown Township, and I think it's a wider audience. The impact you've made on the entire county, and Montgomery for that matter, is huge, and that is an excellent thing to leave this job with. So I thank you. The county thanks you. The state thanks you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steph's dad. I just want to say I'm proud.
All right, anybody else? I know we have a few people on Zoom that want to join us here from remote.
Ms. Lamanna, if you can hear us, please go ahead. Debbie, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Okay, we're going to come back to her really quick. Next is another colleague, Ms. Amy Farkas. Ms. Farkas, can you hear us?
All right, it's not a good night for IT. We've got microphones that don't work, Zoom doesn't work. All right, we'll move on. We'll see if we can get to them later. I'm going to take a minute to say a few words, and I'll give my colleagues a chance to speak as well. To the residents of this township, I'm not sure everyone truly appreciates what really goes into the job of Township Manager. You have to be an expert in so many different areas. If you think just for a second, everything that goes into this job, you have to oversee a large police department, fire and emergency services, public works, finance, IT, park and recreation. If you just take a step back and think for a moment how varied each of those things are, and then imagine that you have to essentially be the CEO of all of those things and have to know about all of those things, it's truly incredible. It is a task that is almost insurmountable. But I can say without hesitation that Stephanie Teoli-Cools was truly a master of every one of those areas, and she was a leader to every one of those departments. I'm just in awe of her knowledge on each of those areas and just the leadership and the efficiency with which she helped to lead this community for such a long time. The other thing is, no matter how much any of us might think we know about local government when we first get elected, the reality is we don't even know the beginnings of it. And so it's an overwhelming experience when you first take office and realize all the different things that you have to have your hands in, and you don't have a lot of time to get up to speed. And I honestly, without question, consider Stephanie a mentor. She, more than anybody else I've ever known, really taught me the inner workings of local government, how this all really works, all of those departments that I just mentioned, helping all of us to be able to understand those departments so that we can help lead the community. And that is a gift that I can never thank you for enough. The knowledge that you have bestowed on me, the things you have taught me, the guidance you have given me, it's been a privilege to, for this board and you to lead this township for so long, and one of the greatest experiences of my life, and not something I knew that I was going to be involved in when I ran for office, that I would get to work with you and learn from you. So that's just been such an amazing perk of this job. So I'm going to miss your leadership. I'm going to miss your counsel. More than anything else, I consider you now a dear, dear friend, and I'm going to just miss talking to you all the time, every day, about anything and everything, and not just township-related stuff, life stuff. So I have no doubt that we will stay in touch, and we were going to stay friends, but seeing you every day and talking to you every day, I'm going to miss that terribly. But I'm so happy for you, and I wish you all the success and peace and happiness in retirement. So just have fun. You've earned it. You've worked so hard for so many years. You deserve to have fun. So thank you for everything, Stephanie.
This whole week, I've been in denial, and I've been radio silent. I haven't been texting. I first met Stephanie when I volunteered to be on the HRC. It was a new initiative from the township, and nobody, we really didn't have an idea of what we were doing, but Stephanie is a master at connecting you with the resources and the people that you need in order to get the job done. Her focus is always the people, the citizens, the people that she works with. It's amazing to watch her communicate and dumb things down for me so I can understand what's going on with all of the interrelated government workings, and it has just been a pleasure to learn from you, to get to know you. You are competent. You are compassionate, and I think anybody who works with you wants to take a little bit with them and be that in some capacity. So I thank you for being a leader. I thank you for being a mentor, and I thank you for also being a friend, and maybe I'll be able to text now. Thank you.
So Stephanie, when you told us that you were going to be leaving us, it seemed like we had so much time left, and it's been hard to come to terms, but today's the last day, to be honest with you. I'm so happy for you, but selfishly sad for us, for the board and for the township, because what you've done for this township has been truly amazing. Like Mike said, you are working tirelessly, constantly, and we know that. We see, when you're texting us or calling, there's an emergency going on. You're always on top of everything, and you can tell just with the staff that you have here, how well they work, how much they appreciate you, and they look up to you. You're a true leader. On a personal level, when I was elected, Anna and I, we were new, and you called us right away, got us up to speed, worked with us, never got tired of us. I needed questions. I could text you at any time, and you're going to be right there, giving me an answer, finding the answer that I needed. So personally, the leadership, the mentorship that you showed us, and just the friendship, you're always there for us. We're dearly going to miss you, but I'm so excited for your opportunity, and I know you're going to do wonderful things. I just want you to make sure that you take some time for yourself and relax, enjoy your retirement. We are going to miss you so much.
Stephanie, I just wanted to say thank you, and just reiterate exactly what everyone else said. Your true leadership and how you get new board members up to speed and diligently informing them, making sure that they have the knowledge to do this job, is incredible. And I think one of the things that we will be continuing to thank you for is the team that you've built here at Middletown. We are in really great shape. We have a really phenomenal team that you helped put together under you. So I am sad to see you go. I want to thank you for everything that you have done for all of us, and thank you for leaving us with the staff that we have.
So I wanted to go last because, as Stephanie pointed out earlier, I think I am the person that has served with you longest, even though, as Mike pointed out, none of us have ever known a different Township Manager. And I was thinking back to the first day that we met, and I was trying to be very serious, new elected official, and the first thing that flew out of my mouth was, "Ooh, I love your Tory Birch flats." And Stephanie immediately said, "Oh, this is going to be different," because she had worked with male supervisors for I don't even know how long. There certainly hadn't been a woman on the Middletown Board for a long time, and it looks a lot different up here now. But as a younger, at the time, 10 years ago, younger woman trying to find my way, Stephanie was a mentor in so many ways. I'm glad Mike talked about your expertise because it's very, very true, but what I hope you take away as the theme of tonight is how much of a mentor you are to so many people in so many walks of life. And you've certainly taught me a great deal about being an elected official, but certainly about being a woman in a male-dominated field, which you had to walk that walk well before I did, and also being a mother. You were always generous and free with your advice. I know you said your family is coming. Are your boys here? Can you stand up, boys? I don't know if you realize that you two, you are really the pride of her life, and she talks about you constantly. Thank you. They're bearded, so they're older than my boy, which has been helpful because my son was six when we started working together, and you were so helpful in helping me through some of the challenging moments of having a tween and teen boy. So thank you for being so generous and free with your advice in all of those facets. I'm dearly, dearly going to miss you. Thank you.
Just because I want to embarrass him, Joe, her husband's here too. Why don't you stand up? I'm also told, I think we got the Zoom thing sorted out, so...
I believe so. I have one Zoom participant who was able to send me their response, and it's our former Parks and Recreation Director and also the interim manager before Stephanie's time, Debbie Lamanna, who shared, "Please tell her that I am proud of her accomplishments in Middletown. I knew from our first lunch that you were a perfect fit for Middletown, and you've made a very lasting impact on all of us, and best of luck with your new path." And it sounds like we weren't able to fix our IT issue, but also on the Zoom call are both Amy Farkas, which is one of Stephanie's earliest coworkers, and also her earliest first boss, Pete Whipple from Elizabeth Town Borough. He's listening right now, so you can tell him hi.
Hi, Pete. I learned everything that I know about being a municipal manager in my first four years working in Elizabeth Town Borough with Pete, so I'm very honored that he's here. Tell him he can text me his comments.
And if I could just conclude, Mr. Chair. I echo everything that everybody has said in this room. I've known Stephanie for seven years. I first knew her as professor during my time at Villanova, but there's very few people in her life that you meet who you can say that because you met them, your life has profoundly changed, and Stephanie is one of those people in my life. My life is entirely different because of you, and I thank you so much for it and everything you've done for me.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to say a few words? Yes?
Good evening. I had not planned to speak, but I wanted to give voice to the voice that you didn't hear, and that's Debbie Lamanna's. The lunch that Debbie mentioned was arranged by me 15 years ago, 14 years ago, when I first met Stephanie when she was the manager in the municipality where I lived, and when Steph decided to look for a different challenge, she wasn't sure what direction she wanted to go. And I called her and said, "Have you thought about Middletown?" She said, "No." I said, "Why not?" And she said, "I don't know. What do you think?" I was then and remain a cheerleader for Middletown. I told Steph that I thought Middletown had great bones. I think that was the word I used. I still remember it, and I said, "It has a great infrastructure. It has talking manager speak. It had a great combination of residential, non-residential properties. It had great park and rec that Debbie at the time was running, and because of the resignation of John Burke, Debbie was serving in two roles. She was serving as her own park and recs director, but also she was the acting manager." So I couldn't be more effusive in recommending to Stephanie she consider Middletown. She said, "Let me think about it." So a little while later, she called, and I asked, "May I arrange for you to meet lunch with Debbie, and you can talk to Debbie about her experience in Middletown?" So it was, now, Pellegrino will take credit for encouraging Stephanie to come here, but based on those initial discussions, Stephanie got way more interested and really got enthused about it, and it's Middletown's gain that she ultimately elected to move in that direction. But I wanted to give the credit to Debbie because Debbie was so enthusiastic at our meeting when she was extolling all the virtues of Middletown. So I think Debbie was probably the real catalyst to convincing Steph to make the leap to go from where she was to here, and I think everybody's benefit from it. So, thank you.
Ed called it a diamond in the rough.
Right.
Ed, I had no idea that you were responsible for that.
No, Ed called it a diamond in the rough and said, "It's an opportunity. You can make a difference there," and it really held true.
And I can't tell you how many times in the intervening 13 years that, without me asking for credit, she has said, "You know, that was a great call you made, and I'm glad I did it, and we're all glad you did it." So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, well, if nobody else wants to talk, Stephanie, do you want to say a few words? few words?
This is unbelievable. I am so humbled by all of these words. I really want to express my deepest gratitude for the opportunity to serve this remarkable community. It has been an honor and a pleasure to work alongside our elected officials, our dedicated team of employees, of professionals. And again, the elected officials, the residents, always putting the community first. And that's just a real honor, and it's something special. We've faced lots of challenges, we've embraced progress. I think we build a stronger Middletown. I want to thank the community. I love this community. What a great, what a great town to work. Thank you for your trust and your support. Thanks for the partnership over the years. I leave with a lot of pride of what we have all accomplished together, and I really have confidence that the future of the township is going to be incredibly bright. Thank you to my posse of municipal managers, who just, I was so blown away by their presence here. It was a complete surprise. I'm very grateful to my family for being here. I have been slightly choking up, but not bawling completely, but it might happen now. I'm so grateful, and I am fortunate to have just a great, strong family. My mother instilled in me the concept when I was very young, just the basic golden rule, the basic, "Do unto others as you would have done unto you." You know, the working class, everybody puts their pants on one leg at a time. And that's really driven me, and that's driven the manager I am, the mom that I am, the friend and mentor that I am. I want to thank my dad for passing down his badass management skills, his people skills. My dad managed a grocery store, and I always compared the fact that he had aisles and I had streets. A lot of similarities, but it's a gift. I want to thank my sisters, who are both here. Two of my sisters are here, Michelle and Christie. I want to thank them for cheering me on at every turn. To my boys, Michael in the back, Sam in Oregon, Rafe, who's a local government kid coming up the ranks, Jackson in Montreal, and my partner in crime, Joe Coles. Thank you guys for inspiring me every day. The spirit of this community, this organization, are going to stay with me always. And although I'm leaving, I'm going to be cheering you guys on, and I wish you all continued success. Thank you so much for this incredible, over-the-top recognition. I'm so honored.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess, so we can all catch our breath, and so folks that didn't come here to hear about land development can take their leave. I mean, you're welcome to stay, but, thank you.
All right, we're going to resume our meeting. And the next item on the agenda is an upcoming event. We have Bucks County Police Memorial Day. And that will be Monday, May 19th, 2025. That'll be here at the Middletown Township Municipal Center. The ceremony will honor Detective Christopher Jones. And that will begin here at 12:00 P. M. So again, that's May 19th, 2025, 12:00 P. M. Bucks County Police Memorial Day. All right, so next on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Hold on one second, let's see if we can close that door just because it's...
Okay. Hi, Dave Cahill, 462 Cynthia Ave, Pendel. Former member of the Pendel Fire Company. I'm still trying to get answers about the loan documents for Tower Eight. Haven't been here in a couple of months. So I got a little tip that the contract is in the hands of the fire companies between the township and the four fire companies. And the loan document, the loan payment for Tower Eight is in the contract. Are you aware?
I can't really talk about the contract. We've agreed to confidentiality with the fire companies while we're negotiating it. So there is no signed contract yet. There are discussions that are ongoing between the four fire companies. So I'm not going to talk about any of the details of that contract until it's final.
Well, the big question is, why are the Middletown taxpayers being put on the hook for the mismanagement of the Pendel Fire Company?
I'm not going to answer any questions about the fire company's contract.
So I've asked this question before, and I'm going to ask it again. Lying on a loan documents against the law, right?
I can't answer that question.
Can we ask the township lawyer?
No.
No? So I'm just going to get stonewalled like I've been since August of last year?
I don't know why you're asking the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors if something that the Pendel Fire Company did was illegal. They're not incorporated in Middletown Township. They are not Middletown Township. Middletown Township did not sign the loan documents. We don't have the loan documents. I don't know if there's any validity to what you're saying. I'm not saying it's not fair for you to ask these questions. I'm not saying that there is not merit to what you're claiming. I'm really not. I don't know. I'm just saying, I can't answer for you on behalf of Middletown whether something that another legal entity incorporated in a different municipality did something illegal or illegal. I just can't.
So if you take ownership of the loan, are the loan documents going to be public information?
I can't answer that question.
I'm being told yes.
I can't answer that question.
Yeah, yeah. So it's going to be interesting because collusion's a crime too. Okay? And I can't blame Amy for any of this because she's new. She doesn't even know what's going on. She wasn't here for any of the meetings unless she was watching on TV. But everybody else has heard all my questions, and I'm being stonewalled. And it's just not right that the Middletown taxpayers are being put on the hook for this big loan that the Pendel Fire Company should have never took for this tower. They hadn't, you gave them enough money. They had plenty of money. So I'm not going away. And this could come back to haunt yous, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
My name is Carmen Corfagnolo. I resided 637 Hillside Avenue. And we're wondering when we're going to start on the storm drain project over there.
Mr. Kessler?
Sure thing. The hillside drainage project was one that was designed, put together. It did rely on an easement coordination for where the pipe leaves hillside and goes to the Shammany Creek. Unfortunately, to date, we've not been able to coordinate with that property owner, which is essential for the project to move forward. So that continues to try to be arranged. But until that's in place, the project can't have the pipe that actually takes the water to the creek put together. So we'll continue to try to pursue that. But at the moment, it's still in a holding pattern.
So in the meantime, we continue to get flooded out each time that it rains. And from what I understand, there's one person holding this up.
The drainage pipe from the road to the creek does go through one property.
That she installed. She installed that pipe, or her parents installed that pipe themselves. Originally, that pipe ended in the culvert.
And that's part of the issue. So there's not an existing drainage easement for the township to do work on the private property. That's what we're trying to establish as compared to if it was a history of a pipe that was privately installed. So I know it goes back a ways. Happy to follow up with the folks more about it. But as of right now, the project's not slated to be able to move forward until we're able to resolve that issue.
So what is it that we can, the rest of the homeowners can do in the meantime to help get this pushed forward? As we get flooded out each time that it rains hard?
That's something with staff and the management here will be able to coordinate with you more. Like I said, it's kind of hit that hold, that hurdle, to have it be able to move forward. But the township can't construct a project that goes off of its right of way without coordination, you know, with the private entity there. So we'll be glad to follow up with you more, look at some options, maybe to try to figure out how to move it forward. But as of right now, that project's still kind of stalled, unfortunately. But we're still looking to move it forward because we know it's an important one. To improve the drainage there.
And who is it that I contact to discuss these matters?
I'd be happy to follow up with you myself, and I'll coordinate with staff accordingly. So if you don't have my contact information, I can give it to you here and follow up with you this week as we go forward.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kind of following up on that. If that pipe has been in there, that drainage pipe that you need an easement for, how old is that pipe? And if it fails, then who's going to fix that pipe? Is it just going to...
Well, if it's on, yeah, it's on private property. So that's the effort, and it has been for this project, to try to coordinate that, to establish an actual easement for work to be done outside the public right of way. So I hear what you're saying if it's...
Like if it fails tomorrow, like if it fails tomorrow, then what's going to happen down there?
That would be something we'd have to coordinate as a township with the property owner.
So it would still be with the property owner?
Yeah, we're trying to get ahead of it to establish that easement so we can be ahead of that kind of situation.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Sheldon Post, Red Rose Gate. I will be brief. I was involved upstairs, but I think the lights went out, haven't they? Yeah, so I missed the end of that meeting.
Yeah, it's dark.
At any rate, I just wanted to read two things very quickly. And it's basically just to put a period on a point I've been trying to make for a couple of different meetings. So first, this is the agenda from the zoning hearing board dated Wednesday, March 26th. Looking at item 3B, which says, Appeal 25-6, Winter Star Corporation applicant 640 East Lincoln Highway, Langhorn, PA. 12 addresses notified. That was it. So my point has been, I have no clue what that was all about. However, one month later, zoning hearing board regular meeting Wednesday, April 23rd. Same item, strangely enough, 3C, Appeal 25-6. Winter Star Corporation application is seeking a special exception in three variances from the Middletown Township zoning ordinance to allow a Taco Bell fast food restaurant with a drive-through at the property, 640 East Lincoln Highway, Langhorn, PA, former Denny's, 12 addresses notified. So that makes my point entirely. 12 addresses notified. I am not one of the 12 addresses, but I have a clear idea of what that item is about now, unlike the month before when it was written the same thing, and you had no clue. So she's gone, but I thank Stephanie because I know she had her hand in that. And I thank anyone else who's involved in writing agenda items. Because that and the rest of the agenda is also very clear. But I found it very striking. Those two items are the same thing. And the first one, you'd have no clue. And the second one, I think you know all about what's going on with that particular item. So I thank you all for that, and I hope it continues. Thank you for the time. And even though I missed the rest of my meeting, I think I'm still going to bail out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Other public comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Board. Lance Seggers, 98 Queen Lily. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Teoli Coles for her service. Second thing, I had a question. I'm not sure who would answer it in regards to trash collection. So prior to the new changeover to the new system that we have, typically, I'd probably see at the earliest our trash collection would start at, you know, 7:00 A. M. What I'm seeing now more frequently is them showing up at 6:15. Sometimes earlier, I think last week or two weeks ago, they forgot a day, and they showed up at like 10 of 6:00. How early are they allowed to show up? I know I spoke to Eric over here, and he said they're showing up in his neighborhood sometimes before 5:00 A. M. I understand they got a new contract. They probably don't really care about the citizens because it's already been awarded. What's the earliest they're allowed to show up?
So the trash service is regulated by both the contract and the related ordinance. I believe 6:00 A. M. is the earliest they're allowed to collect. It is a violation of their contract. If they do collect prior to that, they might show up on site, but they're not supposed to actually start collecting until 6:00 A. M. or later. And if that does become an issue, please let us know here at the building. We'll address that with them.
Okay, well, I'm letting you know now because they're collecting.
You got it.
You know? And it's loud enough to where the one morning a couple of weeks ago, my six-year-old son gets up out of bed and comes downstairs because, you know, it's light out, he thinks it's time to get up, okay?
And I'll reach out to you to get some more specific details too, so I can relay that to them.
Okay, thank you. Second thing is, I know I spoke at the last meeting when the woods overlay was being approved. I discussed with the board about the capacity study that was recently done in the Shammany School District, discussing the emergent issues of student population being an issue currently, but being a really drastic issue within the next five years, okay? Did anybody from the board? I know it hasn't been posted on the Shammany website. I know part of the reason why is because they didn't want to put school, you know, blueprints and things, so they had to figure out a way to put the capacity study on there. So I know Superintendent Bowman plans on posting that. But has anybody reached out to the school board or Superintendent Bowman to get an idea of what that looks like and what the capacity study is saying as you guys are approving land development, which specifically affects our students?
I have not, specifically, no.
Okay. Okay. I would think, you know, not to tell you guys what to do, but that would be something that would be important for a board. Because while most of the issues that are going to arise from student population are going to be increased taxes, which a lot of people are going to start blaming the Shammany School District, when really, a lot of the people sitting up here are the ones that approved all of these residences being built, the development which directly correlates to more students in our schools.
Well, let me clarify. I talked to Superintendent Bowman and President Sullivan frequently, including about land development issues. And they certainly make their feelings known about specific projects when they have them. So it's not, I, the answer to your question was, I have not seen the study that you're referring to specifically. But we definitely communicate with the school district about land development.
Okay. Secondly, you know, speaking of that woods overlay, and I know I've been up here, you know, pounding my chest for over a year now, where other townships are changing zoning to curtail development. This township seems to be going the other way, where we are changing zoning. We are approving overlays, approving variances to allow developers pretty much to do whatever they want in our township. The headlines, I didn't see or any of the articles mentioning what Woods is planning on doing for their population. I know they spoke a lot about it at this meeting, but I think most of the news organizations read it exactly the way I read it when they proposed it. Why do you need a 90% cap on residences if you're not planning on developing, you know, 114 acres? You wouldn't need that much if you don't plan on developing it. So just wanted to bring that to, you know, to light. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items. They are as follows. A, consideration of authorizing payment of the May 12th, 2025 bills list in the amount of $1,905,929.2. B, consideration of approving the April 7th, 2025 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. C, consideration of approving resolution number 25-10R, applying for a Department of Community and Economic Development Watershed Restoration and Protection Program grant. D, consideration of approving resolution number 25-11R, applying to the Department of Community and Economic Development Flood Mitigation Grant. E, consideration of Financial Security Release Number Three for site items completed to date for Stone Farm Land Development. S/LD number 22-7 in the amount of $354,725. And F, consideration of amendment of minor subdivision for previously approved minor subdivision, S/LD 22-2750 Olive Street. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion to approve all consent agenda items as read.
Thank you, Ms. Corpulter, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss, has been motioned a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none of those, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Next on the agenda, consideration of preliminary final land development approval for 141 Highland Avenue Rising Star Daycare to expand existing daycare and reconfigure existing parking lot, R2 Residential Zoning District, S/LD 25-1. Yes?
Good evening, Board. Frank Dillon on behalf of the applicant, Zelda Feldman. We're here on property 141 Highland Avenue, better known as Rising Star Daycare. It's located, you'll see the overview of the site on the board there. And I have with me tonight Ms. Feldman, Sherri Cohen, who runs the operation, and the engineer, who will answer any questions that you might have. We're here requesting that final, preliminary and final land development. We have, can you put the plan up? There's an existing building. There's an existing building to the front of that. There's a proposed, there's an outbuilding, which we're going to propose a second floor and to be attached by that little 30-square-foot addition. And it will be used as part of the daycare. It's been a daycare for over 20 years. We've received relief from the zoning hearing board. We've been to the planning commission. And as part of this project, we're redirecting the traffic to make the traffic flow. We're adding more spaces, and it will improve the circulation. We're, will comply with all the requirements of your letters from the engineer and others. We're asking for three waivers. A waiver to allow one row of all-street parking spaces to exceed 12 spaces. We're going to have 14. Can you point to that? Oh, okay. Road closest to the building, where you see the wheelchairs. We're going to have 14 in a row there. We're also asking for a waiver to not provide a planer bed at the western end of the 14-car parking row at the parking lot entrance. And a waiver to not provide 1.5-inch minimum caliber tree for every six parking spaces in a single row and 12 parking spaces in a double row. So the waivers were asking as part of this application. There was one discussion about the PICO utility pole. So our answer is, we will comply. We have to work with the township and PICO as to how it can be moved, whether it should be moved, or what else we should do. If required to move it, we will do it. So that has to be worked with, through with the township and PICO. So I have the owner, the operator, and the engineer to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Kessler, any concerns other than the issues that were addressed?
No concerns at this time. The waivers requested, re-reviewed, no objection to the ones they have proposed with what they have on site here. There are a few comments still to be addressed, and they've noted that they'll comply with all these. And they mentioned the utility pole. That's a coordination with PICO mostly with the applicant, and the township will oversee that that's completed. And just to mention that the planning commission, they had recommended with a six-to-zero vote for the plan as well.
Okay, any questions from any board members?
The waiver around the parking lot trees, will they be planted elsewhere? I know that usually happens, or...
If you're asking for a fee or planning in lieu, we're willing to do that.
Okay, great. And any concerns of residents that came out to zoning or planning associated with this?
No, not of note for what they have proposed here. So as much as it's a land development, is really an addition as shown on there. And then the rest of the work is for that parking flow. So yeah, no objections really to note there.
I'll note, there was one neighbor that came out about traffic concerns on the road, but it came out in the planning commission that that was really more caused by school buses not having to do with the daycare of other parking on the street. So what we recommended at the planning commission was that that maybe be addressed with the Citizen Traffic Commission.
Any other questions? If not, I can accept the motion.
I make a motion to grant land development plan approval for the Rising Sun Daycare expansion at 141 Highland Avenue, SLD number 2501, with the following conditions. Number one, applicant shall comply in full with all requirements of the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and Middletown Township zoning ordinance, unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Number two, any remaining review comments shall be addressed in full. Number three, applicant should pay a fee in lieu of parking lot trees that have been waived, in the amount determined by the township engineer.
Thank you, Ms. Corpulter, a second.
Second.
Thanks, Ms. Hannah, has been motioned a second. Any board questions at this time? Any questions from the public? Seeing none of those, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, good evening.
Next on the agenda, we have consideration of preliminary and final land development approval for 141 Woodburn Road to construct a new 3,360-square-foot office building with associated improvements, including utilities, concrete sidewalk, asphalt parking, and stormwater basin in the P Professional District, S/LD number 24-8. Yes, sir?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Thanks for having me. My name is David Boginsky with Gilmore Associates. My client, Syed, could not be here tonight. He's very sick, but I will be representing him today. So this project here, if you can hear me well, is 141 Woodburn Road. As mentioned in the introduction, we're in the P Professional Zoning District. The property is fronted to the west by Woodburn Road, which is a PennDOT road. And we will be taking access for both pre- and post-development off of that access. The tax parcel is number 22055215, and the property has a gross lot area of two acres with a net lot area of 1.88 acres. In the existing condition, as you can see here, the, to the left of the site, the existing condition is one 5,071-square-foot office building with associated parking areas and drive aisles. In the proposed condition, we're not demoing any of the existing condition, as you can see there, either the building or the parking lots. Instead, we are, we intend to construct a 3,001, 3,360-square-foot office building in the rear of the site, as you can see here. We will be installing all the required parking per the zoning ordinance, drive aisles, et cetera, landscaping, lighting, stormwater management, all utilities. The stormwater management will be in the rear of the site to the, excuse me, east of the parking area, as you can see, all the way to the right of the plan. This basin will control all the impervious from the site and will meet all local and state regulations for water quality, peak rate, and volume. Lastly, at this current time, we have Bucks County Conservation District approval. We're still awaiting sewage planning approval from the lower Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority, and we are currently going through the PennDOT HOP process to obtain a permit from them as well. As for the waivers and the township comments, we have addressed all the comments through the township engineer, fire marshal, the Township Advisory Council, as well as Bucks County Planning Commission. And all of them are either fully addressed at this point or are, will comply, and will be forwarded to the township upon receipt. As far as the waivers, we're asking for three waivers for this project. The first is to not provide separate preliminary and final land development plans. We've worked through the township comments extensively, and we feel that at this point, we are in good shape to... Essentially, the project is designed to find all plan approval, we think. The second waiver we're asking for is to not provide 15 feet from the edge of parking area to the outside wall of our building. Given the space considerations and the narrow, the narrow aspect of the site, we don't have a lot of room to provide that exact 15 feet. So instead, we provide 8.7 feet from the edge of the building to the parking areas, and that matches what the existing building is showing right now. And lastly, our third waiver request here is going to be for, to not provide the minimum 12-foot for access drives to any property lines. So in the existing condition, it's essentially an existing non-conformity. In the proposed condition, we are actually, in the front of the site, we are moving the access drive away from the property line, so we're actually making the situation better. the access drive away from the property line, so we're actually making the situation better, but we still don't meet that 12-feet requirement, so we're asking for a waiver on that. And if there are any questions, I can certainly address them. And yeah, that's all we have.
So that, no zoning variance is correct?
That's correct.
And this did receive recommendation for approval from the planning commission, correct?
Correct.
I know that there was some conversation at the planning commission regarding this being a wetland, or concerned that there was wetlands. Any, and I think my understanding was that there was going to be some study or investigation into that. What were the results of that effort?
Correct. So we had our wetland team go out and do a site assessment of the, essentially, the constructed stormwater basin at the rear of the site, and we've worked with the township engineer, and they have reviewed this wetland report, and they found that this wasn't a federally regulated wetland. It is instead a poorly maintained, constructed stormwater basin, and it didn't have the three criteria for becoming a wetland. So we worked that out. We had our experts go out on the site and, and provide a report, and that has been provided to the township engineer for review.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from any board members?
Just wanted to check with Mr. Kessler. You're satisfied with the results of the wetland study?
We are, yes. We reviewed that. When wetlands show up on the mapping sites, at times, there are different classifications. This one was marked as potentially a wetland, which requires basically further field investigation, and that's what the applicant's team was able to do, go out and actually delineate any kind of wetland boundary, and the report that they prepared was consistent with identifying that it's, it's not an actual mapped federally regulated wetland. I will ask the applicant just to kind of expand on, on that basin that's proposed in the back. It's noted on the plan, if you see MRC, right, Management Release Concept, just to kind of explain what you have proposed back there, and how it manages the water.
Absolutely. So essentially, the, this basin is, per DEP standards, is called Managed Release Concept, MRC. And what this basin is, is if you go out and do testing and you have poor infiltration results, then DEP essentially lets you get away with designing a basin to this Managed Release Concept because you can't infiltrate that stormwater into the ground. So what this MRC basin does is it captures the stormwater, attenuates it in the soil so that the, the grass can grow, you know, all the little creatures in there can, you know, have all the nutrients they need, and the plants actually uptake the nutrients, and it slowly releases the water even slower than you would a regular detention basin. So the DEP standards for the MRC is very, very strict, so we are following that, and we've, the township engineer has reviewed this concept, and so that's essentially what the MRC basin does. It's supposed to mimic infiltration when you don't have infiltration on the site, and this, this site was, had very poor results upon testing.
And I'll just add that area in the back where it releases, if you're familiar with the properties, heavily wooded. There's not a, a neighboring structure or anything right there on the boundary. So with the Management Release design style, it's been reviewed, that seems to be the best appropriate basin to have at the back of the property there.
Thank you. Other questions? If not, I can accept a motion.
I make a motion to grant preliminary final land development approval for 1411 Woodburn Road, SLD 24-08 with the following conditions. One, applicant shall comply in full with all requirements of the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. And two, all remaining review comments shall be addressed in full, which you said they would be.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of preliminary final land development approval of a new Chick-fil-A restaurant with dual drive-through lanes, a bypass lane, order point meal delivery canopies, and other site improvements in the GB General Business District, S/LD number 24-6. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening. Here tonight to continue the conversation that we started four months ago. The board will recall, we appeared in mid-January to consider the merit of the plan, and we had gone through the plan, the review letters, a handful of waivers associated with them, but at the end of that conversation, we deferred, asked the board to defer taking any action until we could address a recent, at that time, request of the township traffic consultant to consider the installation of a length of off-site sidewalk along Buckstown Drive from Oxford Valley Road back to the site. And we indicated back in January that since we did not control that property, we would reach out to the shopping center owner, Simon, to inquire if they would be willing to allow the installation of the sidewalk in their, on their property in accordance with the request of the township traffic consultant. Last month, we got a formal response from Simon, which I shared with the township staff, confirming that they are not interested in having that length of sidewalk installed. And as we discussed in January, if we were unable to secure the permission of Simon to do it, we would agree to pay a fee in lieu of installing that sidewalk, which we have, I think, actually done, or at least tendered to check to the staff, or it's in transit. So that was the lone issue back in January, and four months later, I think we're at a point where we're looking for the board to take action on the plan with that recommendation.
Thanks, Mr. Murphy. I just, for orientation, I want just to make it clear that the Chick-fil-A we're talking about, this is where there already is an existing Chick-fil-A. The one, it's Oxford Valley, Buckstown, Lincoln Highway, right across from Sesame Place, right?
Correct.
And this is a redevelopment of an existing Chick-fil-A.
Correct. Originally, this was a Krispy Kreme location, which ultimately Chick-fil-A acquired and retrofitted, but it has never been the true Chick-fil-A modern layout with all the other updates for customers, et cetera. So the intention was, and the board should remember, on Route 1, the closed Ruby Tuesdays has now been removed, and there is a Chick-fil-A being constructed in that location. This particular location will remain open and available until the one under construction is completed, open for business, and kinks worked out. So this particular project probably will not commence until sometime in 2026. But you're right, this is the site that already is a Chick-fil-A, formerly a Krispy Kreme, and will be removed. Right?
Thank you.
I'm assuming these improvements will help the flow of traffic in that area. Is that correct? Because I think we all know that area is pretty congested, and it's hard to get around if you've ever been in that parking lot.
Today, it's like that, we think, and I think your traffic consultant agrees with the improvements we're talking about. Hopefully, it'll be managed better than it is today. You're right, it is difficult today.
Other questions?
Any concerns with the new configuration that our township staff had put together? It looked good.
No, I don't believe so. We reviewed their site plans. The traffic consultant also reviewed the flow of the, the vehicles around the site. With the sidewalk, I'll just mention, the, the property line is, is back a bit, which is why where the sidewalk would normally be in front of the restaurant is actually on Simon's property there. So that, that's what led to the attempted coordination on that regard, and why the applicant's agreeable a fee in lieu of that, since it can't be placed outside their, their line there.
Did we, once we got the letter back from Simon, reach out and have more discussions with them? It's unfortunate and disappointing that we will not have the ability to put in sidewalks there, especially given, I think this is just up the road from where the apartments are at the mall. So having that ability to walk is key.
There wasn't, there was not any follow-up with Simon Properties. Buckstown Road, as Mr. Murphy indicated, is owned and private, owned by Simon, and so the township in this case is not able to compel Simon to put the sidewalks in as much as we would like them there.
I just add, again, this Chick-fil-A is off of Oxford Valley, so the, the sidewalk, as it's shown on this aerial, is all existing there. They're looking to obviously improve the flow around that area where the vehicles drive, and the sidewalk's being maintained. Where the apartments are is basically the other side of the mall there, closer to Woodborne. So the, I guess, existing sidewalk network here across that road that Simon owns is where Sesame Place is, and Oxford Valley Road doesn't currently have that long sidewalk stretch. So there's, there's currently not something to, to tie in specifically at, at that stretch of the, the road there.
I tend to agree with Ms. Kane regarding being disappointed that we don't have the opportunity to put a sidewalk in around the ring road. I think it would be a valuable asset. I think this applicant has done their diligence in terms of trying to make that happen for us. They've paid the fee in lieu. My suggestion would be, whatever accounting needs to happen, to kind of earmark that fee in lieu, in case when we take this up with Simon and maybe Cornerstone Tracy in the future about the apartments there, maybe we can actually make that happen, right?
Agreed.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I can accept a motion.
I make a motion to grant preliminary final major site plan approval for S-2424 Lincoln Highway Chick-fil-A, SLD number 24-06 with the following conditions. One, applicant shall comply in full with the requirements of Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Two, all comments still outstanding in review letter shall be fully addressed for plans to be considered final, including the approvals of outside agencies, i.e. PennDOT, for completion of the plans in their jurisdiction. Three, applicant shall pay a fee in lieu of sidewalks along South Buckstown Road, and the amount to be term, to be determined by township engineer.
Thank you, Ms. Corporals. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. It's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Farms Edge at Shady Brook. This is just, there's no board action taking place. This is just informational, correct?
Correct. And specifically, one specific topic that we do want to discuss, but just a very quick overview. We met last week with your planning commission, had a lengthy discussion about, and will show you just graphically, the plan that we first presented this winter, and the latest plan that we presented last week to your planning commission based on feedback from, excuse me, the abutting communities that Mr. Morrissey and his staff have met with repeatedly over the last three months. It's not our intention tonight to review the entire presentation that we made last week, but just to highlight a couple of slides showing the plan that we first presented to you back in January, February, and what the plan looks like now. We do want, however, to request that you, direct your staff to advertise the proposed text amendments and zoning ordinance amendments that are required in order to implement the revised plan. And as you said, Mr. Chairman, we're not looking for action on the merit of that issue or the plan until next June 9th, I believe, your next meeting is. So the, the limited purpose of tonight is, one, to have Joe quickly run through with you the changes, and then request that you authorize Jim and his staff to advertise the ordinance so we can come back and make a full presentation on June 9th.
Thank you, board. I'm Joe Morrissey with Fox Lane Homes, and as Ed said, I just want to take probably about 10 minutes and give you kind of the, the quick version of the plan and kind of where we're at. The plan that you see on the board up here now is the board, or the plan that we presented back in February. Besides meeting with township staff, obviously, our first presentation was the planning commission in February, to the supervisors in February. We probably had three or four meetings with the Silver Lake neighbors, and probably two to three meetings with the Villas of Shady Brook neighbors. So got a lot of back and forth, and a lot of good ideas, and, you know, came up with what we think is a, is a better plan that we're really excited by. So from the plan from February, was 161 total units, 26 single families, 135 carriages. Some of the pushbacks that we got on this plan was, for the Silver Lake neighbors, they didn't love having homes so close to them. So on the next plan, we ended up removing the homes here, we ended up removing the homes here, and we ended up pushing this back a little bit. The second biggest issue we had was, we were showing a road coming out into Middletown Township on a Township Line Road. The Villas of Shady Brook, which I saw a couple of board members here earlier, I don't know if they're still here, but they hated the idea of having that access road going out from Shady Brook, kind of behind their development, and then out to Township Line Road. So in phase two, this road came out. Our expectation is that will end up just being green space. We did present or propose to the Villas of Shady Brook that we would give them an easement, that if they ever wanted to tie a trail into that to somehow tie into Shady Brook in the future, we'd be totally open to do that. I know they're happy to get the easement. They don't necessarily want the trail at this point, but the thought is we'd be able to give them a trail somewhere down the road if they ever wanted to, to use it. The third, kind of what I would call biggest issue, was to try to get as much landscaping between Farms Edge and the Villas of Shady Brook and Silver Lake. So I'll show you a little plan here that kind of talks through kind of that and, and what we did. Fourth is the trail kind of coming out through this. The township does own this ground this way. Where the creek is and where it runs, and trying to get stormwater and try to all that, make everything kind of work, the trail coming out at this location doesn't, isn't the greatest idea. We did get a chance to meet with Paul and Patrick in your Parks and Rec, and they gave us some good ideas. We jumped in the car with, with John Rathon, and we spent, you know, an hour, hour and a half, and they just kind of gave us an idea of how we could potentially connect the township from Farms Edge to the surrounding areas around it. And then the fifth, kind of what I would call biggest, is there's six units for the Villas of Shady Brook that are probably what I would call the most affected from our development to their development. So there's nine units on the new plan, where we actually shrank the units on the back of it, just to try to give as much space as we could between the two developments. So those were kind of like the five big issues that we addressed on the, on the kind of second plan. There's still a couple other things out there that we're trying to figure out as we go through it. We're calling for the emergency access to go out here onto Chilton Place, which would be into Silver Lake. Obviously, if it's emergency access, it'd be gated off. It would only be used for emergency vehicles. Some of the Silver Lake residents don't love that. I think Ted is here now, and we'll probably talk about it as well. So that's one that, in case the township decides that this isn't the right place for the emergency access, we also have a secondary just north of the 777 building that we could run the emergency access from that standpoint. The Morellis are here. They live right here on Clifton Place. They have a pretty legit stormwater issue, just from sheet flowing from the Villas of, or from Shady Brook itself, from the farm. We've committed between the stormwater and what we did. You can see on this plan, the stormwater's relatively small. We ended up going bigger with the second one, so we know we need to take care of the stormwater here. There's also some potential stormwater issues here that we know we need to take care of on the stormwater. So we're committed, from a stormwater standpoint, that when we, if we're allowed to build this neighborhood, that we'll figure out the stormwater and the issues, especially with what the Morellis have, and then what Ted and Theresa have on theirs, we'll definitely be able to control that, so they don't have the same issues that they have now. So switching over to the new plan, the 26 single families all went. Now it's down to 150 total carriages, so 11 less units than what we had before, a lot more open space. And if you can see now, stormwater is bigger. We're showing kind of wildflower meadows all kind of through here in different parts of the, of the neighborhood. A ton more landscaping. You see the green area here, so the road went away. And the overall kind of layout and street structure of what we had before is very similar. So, you know, coming in off of Township Line Road, coming in through Lower Make, nice little boulevard, Eco Park, that pond's there now. We have some pretty elaborate plans of how we're going to make that a really, really, really nice pond as you, you drive up, kind of set the stage for the entire neighborhood. Into the clubhouse, swimming pool, pickleball courts. Dave Fleming's house will still stay, so Dave and, and his wife will, will still be part, and their kids will still be part of the neighborhood. You have a meandering trail that goes through the entire neighborhood. We have a vegetable garden, which we'll show you a little inspiration board a little bit later, and then obviously, all the wildflower as we kind of go all the way through. So that's kind of the big kind of changes between the, the two plans and So that's kind of the big kind of changes between the, the two plans and kind of like looking for ways, kind of hearing from what the township said and obviously what the neighbors had and trying to come up with a version two that we think is, is better. And then knowing that over the next 12, 18, 24 months, just trying to keep making it better and better and just trying to come up with a plan that the township likes, the neighbors like, and then obviously works for the Flemings and for Fox Lane Homes. Any quick questions on that? And just like Ed said, and I'll kind of go through this when we're back here in June, but we did hire Sakura Wells, the landscape architect. They're the same landscape architect for Penswood Village. We know how beautiful that neighborhood turned out. So we're working with them to help us out with the stormwater, with the trails, how everything looks, the open space from the wildflower meadows to the vegetable gardens. Because ultimately, you know, the thought of anything you could make look as good as Penswood Village would be an overall win for, for hopefully the township and obviously for our neighbors and for our customers. This is kind of our inspiration of what we're looking for between kind of the meadows that you see, you know, you have the birdhouses, different ways to do stormwater. And it sounds crazy, but if you do stormwater right, it just doesn't look like a stormwater management pond. You can make it look like it's part of the topography and the nature and everything that kind of goes through it. So the thought is with Sakura Wells, they'll be able to help us do that. And a little bit of planning upfront could make things a lot nicer, obviously five, 10, 20 years down the road. Our idea of what the trails could look like as you kind of come through the neighborhood. And then this is our community vegetable garden, which was a neighborhood that I built with my previous employer down in coastal Delaware, where they thought you have a potting shed and water and get the neighbors involved and obviously to tie to Shady Brook and, and the farm and everything that goes with it. We think it'd be kind of a nice little, you know, overall theme for the overall neighborhood where the residents could, you know, grow their own green peppers and tomatoes and all the different herbs, kind of a fun little thing for the overall neighborhood. I'm just going to touch on this real quick. When we went for the planning commission Wednesday night, we agreed that there's, when John McGrath built the Villas of Shady Brook, to his credit, and when you look back at the neighborhood 20 years later, between whatever John McGrath did and what the township required at the time, the landscaping between Farms Edge and there is really, really well done. There's a couple residents at the Villas of Shady Brook that have either some white pines died, so they have some kind of bigger gaps. So John and I had met with the six of the residents that are the closest. There's two areas where on the Villas of Shady Brook property, we're actually going to plant some trees this fall, assuming this development kind of moves forward, with the expectation is we get the trees in now so that by the time site work starts, the trees are kind of established and kind of almost instant cover for them as soon as they go through. And then we were going to plant 11 flowering trees along the back. The only reason why I'm touching on this is Ted lives right here after our planning commission meeting last Wednesday night, and we had these trees on there before because Ted and I had talked a week or two before that. But Ted still has concerns with the overall development and kind of where it is, but I just want to let you guys know on the record and what I said to Ted last Thursday morning was that, you know, we do want to figure out a way because besides these six, these Silver Lake residents are probably the most affected as well. And we'd like to figure out a way to shield this as much as possible so that, right now they look out at the apple orchard for Shady Brook, but try to have this as a pretty view. And then we committed to both Ted and his wife Teresa that even if they're sitting down with us and looking at the landscape plan and picking the trees and what kind of flowering trees and to try to, you know, meet out here with the landscape architect and really figure out what that view is, we're committed to do that. Not that Ted's ever going to support the project, but we're going to try to make it as, as good as we can for him based on the, the things that we have control of. And the only other thing I want to connect on, because Paul's in the audience. So when we met with Paul and Patrick, we talked about a couple of different things. So obviously you got the Villas of Shady Brook up top. We know that they're kind of a multimodal plan. Yep. So there's a plan that the township's working through with Simone Collins and trying to figure out how do you connect everything? And we do really want to come up with some things that the townships and the neighbors are really excited about. And the couple of things that between the township and Teresa, Ted's wife, actually said the same thing, right now as you kind of go through Silver Lake, there's really no great access between Silver Lake and getting over to Middletown Community Park here. That's a spot that doesn't look like it would be that difficult. Obviously, working with Dominic and kind of figuring out different ways. I think it'd be very, I wouldn't say very easy. I don't think it'd be overly difficult to figure out a way to connect this. And then even when we drove kind of over through here and then kind of down, kind of, I would call it Silver Lake Road, but on the side there, you have the widened shoulder. It'd be easy enough to put a trail there. There is one private house that we probably have to figure out an easement to it. I think the county owns some property down here. But even getting to Core Creek, we didn't think would be overly difficult. Not that it's, you know, easy either, but if there's ways we could work with the township to come up with some ways to connect some of this stuff, we'd love to be able to do it. You know, Paul took us up here and, you know, kind of showed how literally you could kind of come up to the end of the cul-de-sac and then all the way down to Maple Point Middle School. So there are some really kind of cool ways to be able to do that. And then the last thing that I'll kind of leave on is that the thought process of what Shady Brook's going to stay, which is, you know, still 52 acres and kind of the agretainment and how they're going to position kind of Shady Brook over the next, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years. And then kind of throw in the residential aspect of it, you know, and then if anything happens in the lower Makefield side where you have the retail, the thought of being able to, you know, in the morning walk in, you know, whether you're grabbing a bagel or grabbing coffee or walking up to a nice little restaurant, potentially going grocery shopping, the thought of being able to connect all this and kind of make it work, I think, could be super special. And then last, and someone kind of touched on it, you know, why would the township consider doing this development over just doing buy right singles? And, you know, for us, the, the couple of ways we look at it is, you know, we'd match the zoning of the Villas of Shady Brook. It does generate a lot of tax revenue. We showed the buy right, single family detached. If you had 32 single family homes at $1,350,000. Total between county township and school district was $274,571,000. The proposed age restricted, that would get you 24 school age children. The proposed age restricted would be 150. Assess values, $950,000. No school age kids. And per our fiscal analysis, we think the total would be 2.143165. I did reach out to Marty Sullivan about a month or two ago and just said, hey, comparing single family versus active adult. Gave him a quick rundown on the numbers. At that point, he said Nishami High School was, was, was pretty close to being that capacity. The thought of being able to generate that type of tax revenue and not have any school age kids tied to it, he said it was pretty attractive to the school board. Not speaking for Marty, but just sharing the conversation that the two of us had together. And then lastly was just kind of the, the homes and what we look to build. So I won't bore you with all of that. We'll give you the full presentation when we come next month.
Thank you very much. Any board members have any questions?
I, I do. First of all, thank you so much. You're obviously listening to the residents and you're looking at our multimodal plan. And there's a lot of consideration. The one thing, though, that I keep hearing from residents is the density. There's a lot of concern for the density. And I know we've switched from single homes to carriage homes and it's 55 and over. The tax revenue, it, it sounds amazing. I'm just wondering, is there a way to adjust the density, still keep it 55 and over? I mean, I think there's a way to find a sweet spot where there's not so much and to make sure that it's not as dense because right there in that area, there's so much going on. And it is wonderful. It's wonderful that there is, but then also it's a lot for people to take in. So I'm just wondering if there's a consideration, and I know it's a lot to ask because you have been very accommodating. But I still think that it, there's a possibility of making sure we take care of our, our tax revenue, our school district, and then also appeasing our residents to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep the density down.
No, and that's, that's a fair, fair question. When we looked at it, the Villas of Shady Brook are like three homes per acre. Silver Lake, I want to say is 2.65 homes per acre. With the way we're set up right now, we're at like 2.79 homes per acre. And then usually it's, you know, school age kids, it's taxes, and then traffic is the third one. The difference in traffic between 150 homes and the 32 kind of buy right singles, the traffic's a little more with the age restricted, but when I say a little more, it's probably one car every two and a half to three minutes. So from a traffic standpoint, it isn't a huge deal. Obviously, we want to do a plan that the township likes and feels good about it, so we're open to any discussion. Because of the location of this and, and, you know, it's a good spot to have density because you're so close to, you know, 295.
95.
Yeah, so from an urban planning standpoint, they would tell you this is where you'd want to put the density. And the other side of it is you're, you're, you're getting the density, but you're not getting the school age kids, you're really not getting the traffic. We're trying to give it a lot of open space and whether you're at the Villa Shady Brook or the Silver Lake, like it's, there'll always be impact, but we, we made the impact as minimal as possible, enough so that we even did a headlight study for the whole neighborhood and we agreed with both the Villas of Shady Brook and for Silver Lake saying that once we know we get the okay, that we'll, we're moving forward, assuming that, you know, the township is okay with that, we'll meet with every neighborhood down there and look at the landscape plan specifically to make sure that we don't have an impact on their life. So I'm not saying no to you. I would just say there's a lot of things going into it that we would just have to sit down and come up with a plan.
I understand. I have one more question. So it's 55 and over and you're saying the traffic is going to be, you know, less.
Not less.
Tell me about that study.
Yeah, so when we did the traffic, the, the way, the peak hours, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and I'm definitely not a traffic expert, but when we're back here in, in June, we'll, we'll have somebody with us. But the way the numbers look is that the traffic's can be a little bit more during peak hours. But when I say a little more, I would say in the, in the morning, I want to say it's like two minutes and 20 seconds, you get one additional car either coming in or leaving the neighborhood every, let's say, two minutes and 20 seconds. In the evening during that peak hour, you'll get one car like every just over three minutes, which historically wouldn't be looked as an impact, like none of the intersections are, you know, impacted where they change the level of, of the kind of intersection. So there's definitely a little bit more traffic, but I don't think anything that people will notice.
Thank you.
I just want to also thank you for, again, you come in and you really work with the community, you become a part of the community. I want to applaud you for that. I think it's refreshing to hear because you expect probably, based on our last conversation, concern about the density. Again, I understand where Silver Lake is. I understand where the Villas are. This is R1. This is two acre, two dwellings, I believe, per acre. The point of R1 is to help preserve open space and, and be able to minimize traffic congestion, minimize the impact that, that overdevelopment has, overcrowding has. So I would also like to address some of the density. You know, is there a compromise that we can come to that is not this plan, but something smaller than what we're seeing? So that way, we are listening to our residents and we are not getting the same density, understanding that it's not going to be buy right, but can we get something closer to the way, to how R1 looks today?
Can I just pile on? Because I think I'm going to make a similar point and then you can answer us both together. I didn't realize the first time I saw this plan that there was a buy right option for 32 R1 single family homes. And typically, I'm not a land development expert, but typically when we see a plan like this that asks us to rezone in order to allow more density, it squishes that density into a smaller area and opens, like preserves a lot more open space than what I'm seeing in this plan. So can you explain to me why this board should make that tradeoff of allowing more density, but without the sort of my really technical term of squishing that I've seen in other plans like this, like Stone Farm, for instance?
Right. And Stone Farm is probably a little bit different, and I know Dana had kind of brought up that last time. The configuration of Farms Edge is a little bit different because it's, it's a little, little more squat and a little bit longer. You have the creek kind of running through, so you have some wetlands and you have buffers that you're dealing with. It just makes it more challenging to, you know, to be able to kind of put the density where you want it as far as to be able to give yourself additional open space. When we laid this out, we were trying to be very strategic of where we put homes and, you know, just be sensitive mainly to where we're going to put the houses to compare to where the other neighbors were that were, you know, currently living there, which is Silver Lake and the, and the Villas of Shady Brook. But realistically, it was just trying to put together a good plan that we thought the township and the, the neighbors would, would support.
Yeah, I think the thing that our, this board is, is concerned about, at least myself, is that this is the only property that's in Middletown. We have no control over what happens for the rest of the farm, the rest of development. This is what we control. So I think as part of one of the earlier phases, you know, it's on us to make sure that we are developing consciously with the residents in, in mind, knowing that we're getting hit with a lot higher density. And to Amy's point, what do we, what are the tradeoffs right now that we are getting for expanding the amount of coverage? And they sound a bit impervious.
So a couple of things. Obviously, tax revenue is probably the, the biggest one. The no school age kids is probably the second one. The third one is we'd love to figure out a way to figure out, even if it's offsite, which I don't think is very typical, where if there's a way to connect, whether it's Township Park, whether it's Core Creek Park, whether it's some other parts of the township, we're, we're open to. I mean, we're definitely open to suggestions. Obviously, the farm's been in the Flemings family for, you know, five generations. You're not making ground like that anymore. I will tell you, the one thing I don't think people, and I even said this to Ted, that I don't think he truly understood, but if you took the true buy right of these 53 acres, I think it gets you 42 single families because I think it's .8 units per, .8 homes per acre. But by the time you put roads and stormwater, it's always going to be a little bit less. But a buy right plan here for single families would be completely allotted out. There's no open sp- space requirement. So even doing the plan we do, even though it's a lot more units, which, which I understand, you're getting a lot more open space with this than you would with 32 or 36, 1.5, you know, or 1.35 million dollar single family homes that have swimming pools and sport courts and trampolines and, and I don't think you'd have as much privacy on the backs, whether it's Silver Lake or with the Villas of Shady Brook. But obviously, you know, that benefits me, so I'm, I'm kind of selling it that way, but I also do think it's true. So, you know, we want to partner with the township and come up with a really good plan that works for the township, works with the neighbors, obviously is beneficial as we can to the Flemings, is, is what we're trying to do and then just come up with, you know, a, a plan that works for everybody. So I'm, I'm obviously open to conversations, but if there's other things we can do on top of, you know, just taking homes off the plan, because the last and probably as I'm talking out loud, you know, the thought process is whoever buys these homes, you know, they're probably within about a five to seven mile radius of this neighborhood, not necessarily saying they're coming from Middletown Township, but those single family homes that they're coming from, which are usually 20, 30 or 40 years older, are going to get freed up and people are going to be able to move into those homes and, you know, the more homes you have here frees up some additional homes in other places. I know one of the gentlemen's I talked to at the planning commission had kind of mentioned, you know, he wants homes that he could afford and, you know, I know when we met with Frank Ferry, he's like, hey, like, how do we find homes that, you know, for the firefighters and the police officers and, you know, school teachers and all very valid, you know, thoughts of what we can do. And I'm kind of open to anything, but I do think just naturally when people move to this type of home, they're usually selling the single family home they've been into like for a long time. And, you know, when they're selling that single family home, someone's probably moving up from a townhome or a condo or someone might be buying their first house. So I do think it's, it's good for the overall township, but that's easy for me to say from up here. But I, I guess the short answer is is we'll happily work with the township to come up with a plan. Because they, we've definitely put in a lot of work over the last like seven, eight months and I feel like we have a lot of support with, you know, with the neighbors and, you know, if, if we're close, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out a way to, you know, hopefully come up with something that you, that you like.
Are there any members of the public who would like to make comments or ask questions? I do, there was one comment that was sent in via email. I don't know if the intention was to have it read publicly, but it says public comments, so I'm going to read it. This is from Carista Zeldin, 2406 Village Road. It says, "I understand that tonight's discussion about the Farms Edge development is a presentation only, but I feel it is important to bring attention to the impact a zoning change would have on what I believe is a uniquely quiet area of Middletown Township that showcases the..." the natural beauty of the Bucks County is known for. Property within RA1 zoning is extremely limited within the township, as evidenced by the current zoning map posted on the website. This particular property is the largest remaining R1 parcel. Additional development plans in neighboring Lower Mayfield Township for Shadybrook Farm, the Wright Farm, and Torbert Farm must be taken into consideration before agreeing to build more than 100 new homes on property that can only accommodate 32 per its current RA1 zoning. As Farms Edge plans progress, I urge you to think about the consequences a zoning change would have on this area as a whole, not just the portion located in Middletown Township." And then it attaches the list of zone properties. So again, that's Carissa Zeldin, 2406 Village Drive. I think a lot of those points were actually already raised and discussed to some degree. But I apologize, you had your hand up. Did you want to make a comment?
Hi. Tom Morelli, 203 Chilton Place in Langhorne, PA. First of all, I want to tell you that these guys have been terrific to work with. Joe and John and Paul Fleming have been absolutely wonderful. They've been coming by the neighborhood, talking to the residents, asking our opinions, taking tours around the farm with us, very understanding. I'm on that, I'm that last one that he was talking about there, on Chilton Place with the stormwater management issue. And the fact that they've been able to redo the plan from version one to version two to help work that out has been great. Dana, I totally agree with you about the density. The density of homes in this area is getting crazy. However, if trying to reduce density means going back to single homes like you saw in version one, I would rather go with the higher density. We, with version one, we were about, all those homes on Chilton Road or Chilton Place there were, on the version one plan, were roughly 100 feet from our current homes. So you're looking right into the back of other homes, and who knows what else they're going to put in their backyards. By going to version two, you've gotten rid of that whole row of homes, you've opened that up to a meadow and a much larger stormwater management system, which is going to help. I mean, Dominic, you saw the pictures that I sent you, right, of all the water runoff from the farm. You know, the sheeting of water that we get off the farm is ridiculous. Our backyard now looks, it's got a dip in it, where the water coming through so badly had eroded away most of the yard. It's starting to affect the foundation. So we really need some help with that, and this version two does it. And I'm sure with little bits and pieces that, you know, if they have to make adjustments, they'll do it. They've just been, you know, you hear, when a property is sold, you hear about developers moving in, and they just take over. They figure they bought the property, they can do what they want, and they just go ahead and do things, and they yes you to death. These guys have actually come out and worked with us, they've listened, and they've made adjustments. And it's taking them a lot of time, and it's probably costing them a lot of money to do it. So, I mean, as one of the residents there, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I think what I'm saying is, I agree. I do not want to go back to the original plan. I think there may be, is there the ability to move more?
That would be great, as long as we don't go back to the original plan, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
I just wanted to reiterate, I thank you for working with the residents, and I know you have a history of doing that here in Middletown, and it's very much appreciated. Of course, we are all worried always about density, and, you know, there's a lot of building in Bucks County, and, you know, it gets a lot for people. Definitely, this plan is better than the first plan, we understand that. And I thank Mr. Morelli for coming up and sharing his views as well. You know, anything we can do to, you know, help with the density, but, you know, keep some of that open space is always a positive. So we appreciate you working with the residents and with the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Kezak, I just wanted, with this, the Shadybrook land development, so there's two aspects to the plan, this project. There's the land development project, which has already been reviewed by our planning commission, but there's also the petition to rezone, which is a requirement to amend the zoning ordinance. What I was asking for tonight is for the board to just authorize us to advertise the proposed ordinance. That way, both the land development and the zoning ordinance amendment would be able to come in front of the board supervisors at next month's meeting, which have both already been reviewed by the planning commission and recommended approval.
And I just want to be clear that none of that would...
It does not approve anything other than me advertising it in the newspaper and posting it on the property.
Right, but let me just finish. None of that prohibits any of the concerns or questions or comments that the board members had tonight about continuing to work and potentially improve the current plan, correct?
Absolutely not.
Correct.
We can still work with them on all of that.
All right, so what do we need, we need a motion to advertise, what, the petition to rezone?
At the proposed zoning ordinance amendment.
I'll make a motion to advertise the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any board questions?
I haven't seen what this zoning amendment looks like.
So the zoning, zoning ordinance amendment is, you have the Villas of Shadybrook, which is right next door.
Yeah.
They're in the AQC zoning ordinance, zoning district. It would just move that district over onto this property. And then there's a minor text amendment that would change the 100-acre requirement down to 50 acres.
I don't know, that seems like a lot to ask, where I haven't even seen the amendment or read what these changes are. And this seems to be the second time that we have a presentation, but then we're asked to call a motion. So I have concerns.
I mean, that's actually, that's fair. I mean, I don't think anybody on this board was aware that they were going to have to take any action on this particular item tonight. So I can't criticize Ms. Kane for wanting to see the petition before she has to vote to advertise it. Is there a remedy here?
You don't officially have to vote.
Yeah, so technically...
We put it on the agenda.
We put it on the agenda just to have, let people know that there was going to be, this was going to be advertised. And most of the time, you authorize me to advertise ordinances, because it's coming out of the township's pocket to do that. In this situation, it's not. They pay for it all. We advertise it, but they put everything in escrow, all the expenses comes out of theirs. So it's technically not required to authorize the advertisement. I just usually would think that it's, wanted to put it out there for the public to know that it's going to be advertised.
It's their risk, all you're doing is saying that you will entertain them coming to your June meeting.
Okay, so let me do this. I did make a motion. Is there a second to my motion? All right, so the motion fails for lack of a second. Understanding that we don't actually need a motion in order to advertise, but can I just ask Mr. Esposito to share a copy of the ordinance?
Absolutely, yes, we will send it to the whole board.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns on this agenda item?
No, again, I just want to thank you for all of the work that you've done, listening to us, listening to the residents, talking with them. We really do appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Mr. Murray.
Thank you.
And thanks, Mr. Morrissey, and everybody from Fox Lane. Thank you to the Flemings for being here, appreciate it. Next on the agenda, consideration of awarding the 2025 Road Program bid to James D. Morrissey, Inc., in the amount of $440,233.16. Mr. Kessler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, fellow board members. Before you, this evening is the recommendation to award this year's road program. It will be utilizing liquid fuels, the highway aid money, the highway aid money and liquid fuels that the township obtains each year. Just to break down the bids for this year's road program, it was set up to have a base bid, which is the milling and paving of North Flowers Mill Road between Maple Avenue and Winchester Avenue, outside the township building here. Also includes Big Oak Road from Township Line Road back about 1,400 feet to repave a section that comes and meets with the rest of Big Oak Road that was repaved a couple years prior. Alternate number one was included with the bid, that was the repaving of Erica Drive, also included some ADA curb ramp work in that neighborhood prior to the repaving. Alternate number two was included a bit later in the design process, and for the benefit, for the township to try to receive the best pricing for this work, it's the Maple Point Crossing, RFP, RFB, excuse me. For those wondering what that stands for, that's that rectangular rapid flashing beacon for crossings where you get the push button to increase the safety there. For what's included with the road paving bid here, it's the concrete and pavement work, the signal equipment, and what you'll see over top of the road with that flashing beacon, that would come a bit later in the summer for the board to look at that. The reason we included that with the road program, it's work, similar work that the contractor would have, so with the unit costs, you get, on average, better pricing when it's bulked in with additional quantity that they'll be doing, rather than a separate project to itself.
I've just, we already have grant funding for that project, correct?
Correct, yes. I was going to mention the Maple Point Crossing, there is a DCD multimodal transportation fund grant, $146,283 for that. The bid for this particular work, the concrete and paving work, came in for 70, or, I'm sorry, $47,067.70. That's consistent with the traffic engineer's estimate for that particular piece of the work there. Just to break down the budget for the highway aid liquid fuels funds that we have, the township budgeted $500,000 this year. If you recall, the North Flowers Mill Drainage Project, which is work that's being done to improve the drainage before the road is paved on North Flowers Mill, that was awarded and is scheduled to start in the next few weeks here, that was awarded at $114,807. It also added an alternate that included improvements for the right turn lane at the shops at Flowers Mill. The road program base bid for this contract that came in, the low bid is $393,165.46. You put those two together, it's $507,972.46. Obviously, that's slightly above $500,000 that we had in the original township budget for this year. Historically, and as this year as well, there are some line items that are included with the road program. Once they mill off the current paving, they may have to do some leveling coursework. Every year, we seem to not need all of that quantity, and that's the expectation for this year as well. So at the end of the day, we do think that we'll be right at, or perhaps even below, that $500,000 mark that we originally budgeted. Either way, we would recommend the paving of both roads that are listed in the base bid there. At the end of the day, bringing it back around a bit, we received a total of two bids, they were reviewed, both were qualified per the township's RCO requirements. The low bidder is James D. Morrissey, Inc. For the budget that we have, we do recommend that the Erica Drive alternate be passed and not included with the recommendation, just, that would put it a bit further over that budget mark. So that's something that was good to get the pricing for, we'll look to hopefully have that included in a future year's program. And this evening, the recommendation that we propose is award of the base bid and alternate number two for this year's liquid fuels road program. The total for that is $440,233.16. That was a lot of dollars values, and a little bit of piecing together, so happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to identify where some of those funding sources are coming from.
Any questions for Mr. Kessler?
You mentioned postponing the Erica Drive portion of the bid, and then earlier in the presentation, I did get lost, you talked about, we don't often need all of what we've set aside for the leveling part. Is there any way to pick up the Erica Drive portion if we end up with extra left over? Like, is that an option we can elect?
If it's that far under, I mean, we do have the pricing from the contractor for that alternate bid, I would say it's unlikely it would be that far under. The alternate bid number one for the ramp work and also the paving of that neighborhood, that loop road, that's Erica Drive, was $130,523. So that's why the recommendation is to hopefully be able to include that with an upcoming program.
That's right, because they need the ADA ramp work as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to award the base bid and alternate bid number two for the 2025 Middletown Township Liquid Fuels Road Program in the amount of $440,233.16 to James D. Morrissey, Inc. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Next on the agenda, consideration of awarding the Summer Recreation Bus Bid to Durham Bus Services in the amount of $24,654.50. Yes, Mr. Graham?
Good evening. The Parks and Recreation Department's before the board this evening to ask permission to execute a contract with Durham School Services to provide busing for our summer recreation program that begins on June 16th. At the February meeting, we asked for permission from the board to go out to bid for bus services. We had six bidders, and Durham Bus Services came in at the lowest of $24,645.50. This cost is a part of our operating budget for 2025 and is in line with what our expectations were for this project, so we're recommending a motion to accept the bid, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Graham? If not, I can accept a motion.
I move to authorize the purchase of, oh, I move to execute a contract for bus services for the 2025 Summer Recreation Program with Durham Bus Service LP totaling $24,645.50.
I'll second. There's been a motion in a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing the purchase of the following Department of Public Works purchases. Air-operated coolant machine in the amount of $3,735. Terrain cut front mower in the amount of $45,199.24. And a PortaCool Apex 4,000 in the amount of $4,500. Mr. Gartner?
Good evening, board. What you have in front of you is a toothpiece, the machinery or equipment is for the shop. The coolant change machine is to flush all the new fluid out of the cars. It's not like the old way you do it, it needs this machine. With over 100 vehicles, it would be used tremendously in not having to send it out. For the coolant machine, that is a, we don't have any cool air in the shop, and it doesn't circulate air through the shop when the vehicles are being ran and tested in the shop. So this would help out with that, to get some airflow, and it's really a safety concern to make sure we have the proper airflow in our shop, so the mechanics aren't breathing all that fumes and stuff in. We budgeted for the shop equipment $19,500 in '25's budget. There are a couple other things that we still have to look at, however, those two items should add up to only $8,235. So that's what we're looking at for that. And then also, the mower, we decided to go with a different style mower, actually, when we looked at this. This will be replacing, we won't be getting another zero turn, as you hear so often. We budgeted this year for $45,000, and it's coming out of Road Machinery Fund, so that's not touching the general budget at all. We are over a little bit by $199.24, so I think we're pretty good with that. Also, with this machine, it is, has a cab, which is helpful, once again, for the guys that are using the machines. And also, this machine can be used also in the winter. I would probably be back next year to ask for attachment for this machine, but it can be used multiple year around. It would be a great asset for the parks. With this one, the deck is a lot bigger, it has a bigger cut, and everything like that. And that's why I'm asking to go with this PC equipment.
All right, and so the coolant machine and the PortaCool, those both come from the capital fund, but the mower would be from the Road Machinery Fund?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gartner? Okay, so can we do these all in one motion?
That's what I was going to ask, you broke these into three.
Yeah. All right. You did give us three mowers, Mr. Gartner, we're going to do all one.
You overachieved.
Before you do that, I just want to let you know that the mower is on an ag contract, which is the same as CoStar's, but it's just an ag contract.
Got it, thank you. All right, I move to authorize the purchase of one air-operated coolant machine in the amount of $3,735, one terrain cut front mower in the amount of $45,199.24, and one PortaCool Apex 4,000 in the amount of $4,500. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Corbald. There's been a motion in a second. Any board questions? Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Gardenmire.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have our Q1 financial reports.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You guys left the most exciting event for the last. It's going to be riveting. Get ready, settle in. I just wanted to announce first off that we did receive our GFOA budget award again. I think it's the seventh year in a row, so the team did a great job pulling that together.
I just want to pause and say congratulations to you for your hard work and earning us this award, just reflective of all the hard work you put in during this whole process. So thank you very much. And thank you to Mr. Yoli Kules and Mr. Valla and everybody else who was involved in that process, and everybody on your staff too. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, they did a lot more than me. It was mostly done when I got here, but I will take it and share it. All right, so tonight we're going to go through our Q1. I don't know. If it's going to advance.
This is like the worst IT night we've ever had. What is going on?
It's like a PDF. It's not a slideshow, but-
Where's Chad?
That's all right. Okay. Here's our agenda. We're going to talk about all the funds. You can skip ahead. Next one, Q1 overview. All right, so this is the high level of all of the operating and enterprise funds. This includes the golf course and the farm fund, which are the enterprise funds. So our revenue was 7.6 million. Our expenses were 7.6 million. We almost had a balanced quarter. So we did pretty good. So you can jump to the next one. If we looked at the annual budget for a quarter, again, we did very well. We came in 289,000 above the budget for Q1 alone, when you look at that. That was mainly due to sanitation fund increase of 207,000. I believe that's attributed to the $75 rate increase that was for 2025. And the investment fund increase was 516,000. All right. There we go. Q1 versus Q1. Sorry, we jumped ahead two slides. But again, the increase was due to those funds, sanitation fund and the investment fund. We had some increase in expenses. This was Q1 '24 versus Q1 '25. General fund expenses, highway aid increased as well. Sanitation fund decreased a little due to timing of the payment for March. All right, this chart here, we have Q1 '25 budget versus Q1 '25 actual compared to the Q1 2024. So this kind of summarizes the last three slides that we just had. So we started out with revenue outpacing both the budget and the prior year. Revenues are not as high as budget. They are higher than last year. The major reasons for that, did I say revenues? Revenues, I'm sorry, expenses, is that where I was? Excuse me. Trying to speed up and I'm getting myself all lost in my slides. The expenses were higher because there was a $363,000 tax rebate to the Oxford Valley Mall properties in Q1, which is an unusual item. And there was also an increase in highway aid due to all of the snow events. There were nine snow events in the first quarter, which last year maybe there were two, three. So that was the reason for the increase in the expenses. This breaks down the revenue by fund for the quarter. Again, we're at 7.6 million for the quarter for revenue. Parks and Rec had an increase. They did a great job. We had 381 children already registered for summer camp. The investment fund increase, we had interest of 324,000. And you can see the other funds there. Here's our revenue by category. So our taxes, our property taxes and local Act 511 taxes, they make up 52% of our revenue for the quarter. And followed by that was the interest income was 14%. Sanitation was 12%. And expenses, we were at 7.625. Again, a tax refund of 363,000 and highway aid fund at an additional 262,000. Now, Q1 is our lowest revenue quarter for the year, and Q2 is the highest revenue quarter for the year. So right now, we're at 7.6 million of revenue. In April alone, we had $14 million of revenue, just for April, compared to the whole quarter. So we're doing great so far this year. So if you want to jump ahead, we'll look just at the general fund, which is the main operating fund for the township. So again, Q1 has the lowest revenue and Q2 has the highest. Right now, we're at 17% of the annual budget for revenue, which is where we projected ourselves to be at this point in the year. And expenses were 21% of budget, again, slightly higher. We were predicting 17%, but it was because of those additional tax refunds that I previously Here's just a chart of revenue by month historically for the last two years. Again, revenue was slightly down compared to prior years. Again, April, it jumped up to 4 million for general fund alone. Expenses by month, again, most of our expenses are consistent for the first eight months of the year, and then everything ramps up in September as we're paying for all of the summer events and all of the construction projects that happen during the spring and Our fund balance, so right now, our fund balance is 8.7 million, which would cover about four months of average expenses. But for Q2, as I said, our revenue is going to increase, so we're going to have an additional 3 million in our fund balance, which puts us at 11.7 million and would cover almost five and a half months of expenses at that point. Capital fund, not a lot of activity in the capital fund for Q1. We haven't really started our construction projects yet, so that is lower, but we're doing good. The next slide's our fund balance for the capital fund. It decreased 107,000, but we are expecting 750,000 in funding coming in in Q2. For our DPW vehicles, for Cithia Crossing Community Park, those are all completed projects. Our investment fund, this was a big increase this year over prior periods, $727,000 increase. This is the balance of the portfolios. You can go to the chart, that's fine. This shows the portfolio value from Q4 2022 through now. As you see, the balance did increase. Q3, it was at its highest level. The drop you see is due to the $2.4 million transfer that we did to the capital fund out of the investment fund at the end of 2024. There is no budgeted transfer for 2025, so the balance should continue to grow. This is the allocation from that investment fund, primarily treasuries. And we did, the financial advisory committee met with the fund manager on April 23rd to discuss the portfolio, and they're actively evaluating the market and ensuring we continue to save our balance, and we'll see what happened after April. And so far in May, our yield for Q1 was 4.16%. Last, we have the pensions. Here's the police pension. Our balance is maintaining there. We have had some increase in contributions and distributions and fees and expenses, but we're still at 56 million for the police pension. Year-to-date, our increase, our rate of return was 1.35 for the police. For non-uniform, the year-to-date rate of return is 1.30. And again, we're maintaining our $12 million balance and continuing to increase. So, in review, I presented a lot of numbers very quickly for you tonight. What you need to go away with is Q1 revenue exceeded both the budget and the prior year, so we're doing good. Expenses were in line with our expectations, although there were some one-time items like the tax refund and the increased snow events. Investment income was way up for Q1, and although our managers strive to have minimal risk, we'll have to wait and see at the end of this quarter how things work out. And looking into Q2, we're expecting at least 15 million in revenue as the bulk of the tax payments are received. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hucklebridge. Any questions? I appreciate the summary at the end. That's a nice way to wrap it up.
I'll share this with you if you want to read it full in detail.
Yeah, thank you. So for the final formal item on our agenda tonight, I think we have to officially acknowledge and accept the retirement of Stephanie Teoli Kules. This is the end of her last meeting as Middletown Township Manager, which is crazy to even say, let alone comprehend. So I don't think we can thank you anymore than we already have, but you leaving does mean we need to appoint an interim manager to fill your very, very big shoes. And so I am going to make a motion to appoint our assistant manager, Nicholas Valla, to become our interim township manager. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five zero. Congratulations, Mr. Valla. All right, so that takes us to other business. I'll start with you, Mr. Valla.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to Stephanie. You will be greatly missed, especially and apparently I have a new position coming up. And thank you for your faith and trust in me, and I look forward to working with you in this new role for this next season.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes, thank you. We do have some plans for signature, just one of our formal items. I didn't want to pass on the opportunity to say thank you to Stephanie as well. It's been an honor working with you for all the years here at Middletown, really second to none, leadership on a day-in, day-out basis, a leader that really extends her hand to bring people up and really brings out the best with everyone that we're working with. So it's been an honor and wish you the best, and just want to say thank you.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes, I wanted to announce that we did hold an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss labor and personnel matters. And then in addition, just wanted to thank Stephanie for all the work that you've done with me over the last seven years. It's pretty much on a daily basis. It's been an honor and a privilege. I learned a lot from you professionally and personally. It's been my honor, and I'm going to miss our talks many. It's going to be hard, but thank you for everything you've done.
I'm going to get to you last, Ms. Kane.
Thank you, Stephanie. Really appreciate everything that you've done. So again, as you saw tonight, you've had a lasting impact. So congrats. I wish you luck in your next endeavor and looking forward to our new interim.
Ms. Hannah?
I want to thank the girls for singing, Sofia and Seraphina. They did a great job. Congratulations to our new officer, Gianna, and I don't want to mess up her name. Zanino? 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 Is that correct? Welcome to Middletown Township. And also, thank you again, Stephanie. I really don't want to say goodbye, and I'm not going to. I'll keep reaching out because you do have the best advice, and I appreciate it.
Ms. Corporal?
Just want to say thank you for everything you've done for me personally and for our township. You will be missed, but hopefully, I know you're just a phone call away, and we will take you up on that. So congratulations, good luck, and I wish you all the best.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you for leaving us so well-prepared. Have a wonderful, wonderful semi-retirement with your new adventure.
And I just, I hope you felt the love, and maybe more importantly, I hope you know how many lives you have positively affected. I mean, it's incredible. It's amazing. So credit to just an amazing, amazing career. Thank you for everything. So turn it over to you. Any final words in your last meeting?
From the bottom of my heart, thank you. That's more than anyone could ever go through. I mean, that was beyond anything I could ever expect, and so just thank you. And I will carry a piece of Middletown in my heart with me, and please stay in touch, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
All right, who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion.
So moved.
Call that a motion in a second. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.